We put it on the T V. Oh, sorry. Good evening, everybody. This is the planning board. Tonight, Monday, the twenty fifth of September nineteen twenty twenty three. And we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So number one on the agenda, we have. Number one on the agenda, we have a decision for permit, special permit number three ten and site plan number sixty eight for Cal Rolling Hills LLC anticipated vote.
My shit.
Salud. Is this something you guys saw when I was away? Or is new?
We discussed this. And it was just to be typed up with additional conditions.
But these are the conditions you said today?
Yeah, I mean, I sent it out this morning, so. It's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
We anticipate a vote, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Everybody went through the.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
The black and white. Everybody okay?
Yep.
Need to proceed with a motion?
Oh, okay, so one thing, page two. When you got rid of number four in section five point one.
I don't have one in front of me, but okay.
Here you go.
Get renumbered five to four.
No, those are the minutes. I have that.
Duh, no. Here you go, right here.
Okay.
So I think all you have to do is just change that number and then we can still sign this.
What do you, what do you?
So page two, you've got section five point one, special permits. These are supposed to mirror what's in the bylaw. So you had gotten rid of four.
Oh.
So number four should be five. It just, the list, you know.
Number two.
We did itself.
Oh, I think I see what you're saying, yeah, okay. So it should be one, two, well, it's only four, four things.
No, there's five.
The premises?
I don't see.
Compatible?
Use will be a nuisance. Eight, 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 be point five.
There's no five.
I mean, these should be, yeah, the format's off. I mean, these should be up here.
I'll show you.
Okay.
On page three, the additional conditions too. Half of them are bold and half of them are.
Are you looking at the right one?
Yes, yes.
They shouldn't be, oh, that's just, that was me, yeah, okay.
Not the key.
Didn't show up on mine, all right.
Correct those right now unless Rich wants to do it or I can always.
So these are the five things that are called out in that thing. So the first one is that the premises.
Right.
Then that will use.
Yeah.
Use will be compatible.
Mm hmm.
Then number three will not be a nuisance.
Right.
And then the, that adequate, appropriate facilities, that's the one you had gotten rid of.
Right.
And then five is pro, the harmony one.
Okay, whatever, if you need to make that change, go ahead. And, and get rid of the, the, the boldish eyes there. I don't know how they were, it didn't show up on my computer, but I don't know.
What was bolded?
On additional conditions.
The first two.
I usually, I recommend, I recommend sending the word and the PDF.
Yeah.
Because sometimes when you go from word to word, it just.
When I printed this out at home, it wasn't bold.
Yeah.
Same with mine, it's not.
Not on my, not on my laptop.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, sometimes. It's a good practice to send one of each.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, they are.
All right.
On my phone, they are, on my computer, they aren't.
I hate technology anyway, so.
That's why I said.
Fine, all right, go ahead and make the changes.
It is a good practice to send one of each, so, because then people say, oh, what an ugly font. I said, I use Arial, you know. No, but look.
That's fine.
It changes. Unless you said a rough in word, but that's another story.
Okay, so we could sign this and just correct the numbering, right, in any bolding?
Yeah.
Can you print?
Keep in mind, that's just draft on it. You're gonna get rid of the watermark. Yeah, okay, I'll work on that. Okay.
Do you want me to work on it?
Sure.
You doing that?
Yeah.
Cause I'll fix the other thing. I got it right here.
Okay. Oh, so are we okay with this? For a vote?
Yes, I am.
Are you?
Yeah. With these corrections, yeah.
I guess, David, it's good too with the corrections? Yes, please. We'll wait.
For the last additional conditions.
Did it will not go to subsequent owner?
Yeah, it's. The special permit does not transfer to any subsequent owners.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's only good for Cal Rolling Hills.
Right. I'm just. You're the writer, come on.
That's true, I am. No, I was just, yeah, well, it doesn't transfer Cal Rolling Hills only.
Yeah, I was thinking like, the special permit shall not be transferable to subsequent owners.
Is that part of the bylaw? Excuse me. I apologize for jumping in.
So you can't actually talk and add anymore? Because we've already stopped it? So there's no more input on this? It's our discussion.
Just, just asking for information's sake. Knowledge. Not making a comment.
It's your meeting, you're not supposed to take anything further.
Let me take. It's just a question, it's fine.
We can't discuss.
So you can make your question and you may get an answer, but then no discussion after that and doesn't affect the, what we're talking here. So what's your question?
In the zoning bylaw, and I apologize for my lack of knowledge by this question. Is it written in the zoning bylaw that permits cannot be transferred to a new owner?
I don't think it is.
But that's what we decided as a condition.
I don't think it's in bylaws.
I apologize, I was out of town and two gentlemen that work with me were here.
Yeah.
And they were aware of that.
Yes.
Yes, we discussed.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we discussed that with them.
Thank you.
It's recorded.
Thank you. Thank you, that's it for me.
So Rich, what, what were you gonna change? Number five should be.
Number five?
No, number four should be number five.
In number.
So it should be one, two, three, five.
Should we have like four removed?
Yeah, remove four, cause it said it was under the board document.
Should we say like one, two, and then four removed?
Four, not applicable.
Not, not, N A. Just so what somebody read it today, they made a typo here.
Yeah, I'd leave it at four.
We could put in four, not applicable.
Yes, something like that.
That's fine, sure.
Yeah, you have to put that back in and just say N A then.
Yeah.
Put the whole thing?
Yeah, put this line in.
So put not applicable.
Right. But you have to put that line back. The one that I took, oh, you did, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I put it, it goes one, two, three, four, not applicable, and then five.
Okay.
And propose use of otherwise.
Okay, right, okay.
Were there any other changes?
Besides the bolding?
Bold. Fine.
On my, on mine, it's not showing up as bold now.
No.
I'm telling you.
But printed it, it's bold.
You may wanna do a PDF and then print the PDF.
Well, I, I highlighted it, bolded it, and then unbolded it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that'll work.
So hopefully that took it out, even if it's hidden somewhere, so. All right, watermark removed, right?
Watermark removed.
Yeah.
Where do I find the, huh, there it is, watermark. Make sure it's gone. Anything else?
I don't think so.
No, I think that was it.
What pens?
Ink.
No.
No. Ink.
Printing two. One is on both sides, that's the one we need. These Skittles are addictive.
Food is addictive. Except for vegetables. Addictive.
No, I don't know, it depends on the vegetables.
Kayla loves broccoli. It's like the only thing she eats is broccoli. Yeah, now it's not bold.
What, are we adding number four?
We can just leave it like that.
Okay.
What's that?
We were talking about adding the line back and putting out applicable, but Rich said it's fine.
Yeah, just have four not applicable is fine.
Yeah. That's what we did.
Right.
Well, he mentioned put the bad line back.
We did it.
Put the actual text back. And then see it's not applicable. What you did is fine.
We're good.
We're good.
We're good.
We shouldn't mention it.
This is where you guys are talking.
That's all right, don't worry about it. Okay.
All right.
Now we're good.
Maybe they call the attention, says, what is that not applicable? They have to go through the bylaws and read it.
Right.
I mean, it could be five years from now.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve special permit number three ten and site plan number sixty eight for Cal Rolling Hills LLC as decided in our decision.
All, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Long to get aye.
David Dufran, aye.
Derek Velli's, aye.
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Motion passes. Ready for ink?
Yeah. Sure.
Who's the testy one?
Yes. You have the double sided one.
This is one side.
Nevermind, I have the double sided one. I should be back in bed.
You should be. But we're signing the single sided. Right? Or are we signing the double sided?
The double. Why don't we sign the single?
I don't know.
Why don't we sign both?
Give me one, I'll sign it. Here, here's a pen.
I've got a pen.
I've got a blue pen.
Black pen, red's red.
Yeah, go over here. Like you.
I had it with me.
Okay, now you just.
That's not be good inside of the lab. People are no fun. All right, this, um. Town clerk? Can we give that to you?
Okay. Can we do?
You're all set?
I wanna thank you for your time and effort, I appreciate everything we've been able to do together. Thank you very much for your time again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
We see each other for something, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
See you, Jim, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Now we have number two, request to withdraw without prejudice, special permit application number three eleven for Donald and Carol Southfield.
Yep.
Well, this is a letter to the planning board members. Donald and Carol Southfield are withdrawing the planning board special permit number three eleven without prejudice and requesting the fee of three hundred dollars be returned. Sign it. Date it, September nineteen twenty twenty three.
Did you track the check down?
Yes, yeah. So it wasn't even processed, the check wasn't even processed, we just handed her a check back.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That was easy.
We're good.
That's just an acknowledgement.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Do we need a motion, or, I mean, they're withdrawing anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can just file the letter. Somewhere should be their application, right?
I just sent you all the revised special permit.
Number three.
Yes?
I'm just telling you, David, thank you.
Number three, an update from the town administrator on the building planning, secretary interviews and selection process. Hi, Jimmy.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. So this afternoon, we had five interviews with five of the applicants that applied for the planning and building secretarial position. All were very, very, very good in terms of they offered some different perspective of, of, of knowledge and experience. But there was clearly one person that had came to the top. And it was decided unanimously by the committee to, to, to offer the position to Kim LaFleur. Kim is currently working for the town of Summers, Connecticut. She has been with the town of Summers, Connecticut for twelve years. She offers some experience with municipal government. She has been working out of the selectman's office during that time period. She doesn't really have any direct planning board experience or building department experience. However, she has done some overlap of some work between building and planning. She's familiar with Permit Link, she said today, which they use in Summers. And she has had some experience with helping individuals with building applications and building permits as they would come into the selectman's office. The committee was comprised of myself, Drew King, Ed Long to get, B J Church. We did offer an invitation to Scott Mansfield, but he couldn't make it. So it was, it was a, it was a really a, a good round of interviews. All five candidates showed for the interviews. There was some, we, we developed some, some questions that were asked by every applicant. You know, tell us a little bit about yourself, why do you wanna work for the town of Warren? How do you see the role of planning and building secretary? How has your professional work experience prepared you for the position? Where do you see yourself in the next three to five years? And then if you had any questions about the town or about the position, you know, to ask us. And so it was important to try to also establish that we're looking for somebody that's going to be staying, you know, for a period of time. That is not looking to maybe, you know, just jump around to different municipalities. It's clear out of this particular resume that this person has stayed at a, at a, at a job for a long period of time. It's clear that she has some knowledge with municipal government. She does also have a bachelor's degree which could be useful in terms of her, her, her skillset. And she's very familiar with Microsoft Suite with Outlook and Excel and Word. I'm sure some of the other committee members that are here this evening could offer any testimony or comments on, on the, the, the pick. It was a unanimous
Yeah.
selection.
I agree with everything that you said.
Yeah, she was impressive.
Yes.
She was, said she was excited about being here, possibly taking the job. She is, loves working with people, is willing to provide full support to all three departments. She actually read through the town website. No one else did that. She did her homework, and yeah, she was very impressive. She has the municipal experience, I think, that would be a good fit for this, even though she doesn't have direct planning board or building experience, she knows her way around the town. And I mean, some of the language between Connecticut and Massachusetts is different, but it all works the same way. So, yeah, but she came to the top without any question.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
She a Connecticut resident?
Yes.
Yeah, she lives in Union.
Union, Connecticut.
Right over the line.
Half an hour.
Half an hour.
Yeah, twenty five minutes or whatever. Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, I think that she, I think she would work well here, I think she would fit.
What is our next step?
So if the board is comfortable to move forward, I can certainly start, you know, trying to negotiate and, and offer her the position to see where we are in terms of the, the scale. You know, as we did, you know, put the position out there, starting at the minimum all the way up to a ten. Now, this person does come with some significant municipal experience and some education components. So, you know, I would imagine it's going to, you know, fall somewhere in the middle of the scale. Depending on where she currently is and where, you know, what we could, you know, financially afford. So if the board is comfortable, we can start that process, and I can call her tomorrow.
If for some reason this fails, do we have plan B?
So the, there is, the, the committee did rank other candidates that, that we interviewed. And I don't know if you wanna, I mean, you do have a.
I wouldn't read.
No, right.
No, no, no. The, the, the second one, she's currently working the assessors office in Lester. She has municipal experience.
I, I just wanted to know if.
Yeah, we, we do, yes, we have a plan B.
Plan B.
And it's actually a plan C if necessary.
Okay. What do you guys think? I think it's like, let's just.
Yeah, let's do it.
Let's do it. And I, I wanna make a comment. Save those questions, they're very good questions. I like it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we give you the, you know, the go ahead and, and, and proceed with the process.
Okay.
We can get a secretary.
And then obviously I will, as the process, you know, comes about, I will probably have something on the agenda if I have, you know, an idea of where we are with everything for the selectment on Thursday.
Okay, thank you very much, Jimmy. It's a good thing.
Yeah, it is.
Mm hmm.
It is.
And we did it fast, good job.
Well, we tried to, because I, I do also wanna comment, there, there was somebody else that we wanted to interview as well. When I had called for, you know, for that person to schedule for an interview, that person had already accepted another job at another municipality. So, you know, with these things, you know, with.
It didn't move fast.
You know, see positions that are open, you know, people do, you know, apply for multiple positions, you know, at a time. You know, as long as we can move somewhat expeditiously, I think we can, you know, secure people.
Yeah, there's a big movement in companies trying to make very attractive to come back to work to the offices now. So people are looking for jobs and they're moving. Thank you very much for being fast.
So nothing says we have to wait until the period, the application period is over to start interviewing, right? We could interview. We could interview, if we get like two or three that look good, we can interview right away, right? Even though it's not over.
And sometimes what people will do is that as we post for positions, they'll say that, you know, applications will be done on like a rolling basis. So, you know, as soon as we get, you know, the first five applicants or the first ten applicants, you know, they'll, you know, they'll be reviewed first and then, you know, so it kind of encourages people to apply soon, as, as soon as the posting's there.
Okay. Yeah, let's get, let's do that, then. Do that. Just so we can jump on good candidates if we're gonna find one.
Yep.
Instead of waiting.
Okay, so moving on, and next is continue the discussion on rules and regulations for site plans.
Yeah, I was supposed to send that to everybody and I didn't.
I know I have.
So it's in the minutes. Yeah, I know. I, I, I reali, I remembered it when I read the minutes. So, yeah, all right, I'll get it out.
Good, thank you, Ed. Next is the board will receive any public comments or concerns. So as you can see, there are no, there's no public here, no concerns, and there's no public or concerns in Zoom. So we're gonna move on. A possible vote to approve any bill, built-in budget items.
So I would like to say that we should not approve OTO bills right now. Two reasons. First of all, we haven't gotten any reports lately, so for this bill, like, we don't have any report. Second, these, I, well, actually, there's three things. So the next one is, these are large bills, so we have been dealing with like three hundred, four hundred dollar bills. These are like almost five, well, so forty-seven hundred and thirty-six hundred. So this jumped like ten times. So, and they spent more hours, but what were they doing?
We don't have anything to show for it.
We don't have anything to show.
No, we shouldn't.
Third, based on the fact that these are so big, do we have any money left in the peer review count? And so that's.
So I think, I, I did send you an email. The accountant did get back to me with regards to that budget item. And there's an attachment there for Angelitis.
Yeah, Agilidus or Agil- Agilitus.
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 In Spanish, it's Angelitas.
Let's go with Spanish.
And it means little women, angel women.
Little angel women?
That's not applicable to us, like.
No.
Oh, no, this is not.
But it's easier for me to pronounce.
This one ninety-eight is the surety. This isn't the balance.
Oh, okay, all right. That's.
Sorry, I didn't see this.
Okay, so we should, we shouldn't approve it.
No, we should not.
Have they been emailing them to the planning board?
They emailed them to me and Joyce and planning board, so, yeah.
And we haven't gotten anything.
Yeah, no, because I usually mail them out to you guys. I forward them out. So, yeah, we need, there's a peer review account.
Right.
Sort of a peer review account, and then there would be buckets under that. And Agilitus has two buckets, one for lot three and one for lot four, right? It's three and four.
Okay.
And each of those should be maintained at five thousand dollars. And these bills would certainly wipe out most, if not all, of those two accounts. So just so you know, these peer review accounts have not been handled very well by the town.
Okay.
I know conservation has had, been very frustrated because they're unable to get just a tally of what's been spent and what's left in a peer review account, so. I, I don't know, maybe the, the old system didn't have a good way to set those up.
Okay.
But.
So you're saying that the one ninety-eight is an assurity?
Yeah, when they, when they decommission, that's the money we have to make sure that the, the site is restored to its
Original.
Previous condition, pristine.
Whatever.
Which is nothing. It's not even gonna touch it, that one ninety-eight.
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, so we're not voting on that, nor voting or approving?
No, not on OTO.
Okay.
We need the balance. We need reports.
Yeah.
Pictures.
Yeah, the reports will come with pictures, but we need to know what they were doing.
Okay. Is that.
And it'd be interesting to see if they've done any of the work that they promised to do like a couple of months ago.
Right.
So you're gonna follow up or not?
If I was a betting man.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, I know.
I already sent an email on Friday and I said, we need the reports, and it got forwarded to Steven, who's the engineer, but I haven't heard anything.
Okay, you are in the control.
Just barely.
Good enough. Then there's an invoice for Total Publications for a hundred and fifty dollars. This is, this was for the job, full-time planning and building secretary for the town of Warren.
I'll make a motion to pay that invoice.
Second.
Do you have a second?
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longigan, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Motion approve any other bills?
No.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a review and possible vote to approve the minutes from September eleven twenty twenty-three.
I have one correction, update from the town administrator, planning, building secretary. The last sentence should be the planning board voted to make the position, instead of should be, up to forty dollars a week. Slight technicality, up to, instead of should be.
Besides that, do we, can we have a motion to approve with corrections?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longigan, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
We talked about any comments and concerns for the poll. What about us? Do you have any comments or concerns, planning board?
We did receive something from Brookfield, their planning board, as a notice of decision for a special permit. And this was a special permit for a diesel engine repair business that's on fourteen Post Road in Brookfield. They're just letting us know they approved it.
Okay.
Okay.
It's correspondence to us.
We should need to scroll back.
Yeah.
And we need to sign that paper.
This?
The, the one approving the.
This out?
Yes.
Do you have the minutes from last time?
I have this that wrote on.
Do you have the minutes from last time?
I got a.
From last time? September eleven?
Yeah.
Oh, wait.
You, I said, do you want to have them sign it? No, not September eleven. The one that Jim did. And you said I'd have him sign. You took it from me and said, bring it and have him sign it.
I don't know, I don't remember that.
Can you print up the minutes again with all the lines so these guys can sign it?
Yep.
You want an hour or?
No, well, I'll just put it in their box and every, each person can come in and sign it.
I have, this one here has a space to sign it.
Does it have all five spaces or just one?
It has five spaces.
Oh, no, is that September eleven?
Yes.
No, what I'm talking about, the one that Jim did.
Oh, oh, okay.
It didn't, it, the, he was supposed to do the lines for everybody. So if you want to sign this one, you can, and I'll correct it.
Is that September? Yeah, we can sign the back page. Yep.
So I received a message from a resident complaining about a, one of the projects, working on non-applicable hours. I, she wanted me to call the police and send the police. I said, I can't. Planning board has no power for that. I suggested they should videotape or record the noise so it's time stamped and bring it to the building inspector.
Does it have anything to do with cars?
No. No, it was more with dirt.
Because I get a complaint about coparts. Resident that lives up by there complained because they, apparently a mobile home or something comes sliding off the back of a trailer and rolled across the road and into a tree. And it was there for over an hour and blocking the road. She did call the police, but they came over with a fork truck and picked it up with a fork truck, put it back on the flatbed, and then the person drove away. But they're like, it wasn't secured properly or anything, and they were concerned, and they got pictures of the whole thing. And they're supposed to be sending me the pictures along with numerous others regarding that site. And that they are actually working beyond their agreed hours. They are working till midnight and beyond.
Well, under the current permit, they have. I don't know what the current permit is.
And we've heard nothing from legal, correct?
You know, it takes so long for this, I can't remember where we're at. No, I think it was that they were gonna take the final set of conditions and run it by them one more time.
Okay.
I think. But here we sit again, so.
And that was months ago.
Oh, yes, this is.
Very.
Well, no, that might have been like a month, month and a half, something, but.
I'm just looking at, at this note. Are we supposed to send notes to the towns around us for the, for projects too?
Uh, only if we, only if you're in a butter, I would imagine.
So this is a, something that it's a butter to Warren?
Yeah.
So what is it, fourteen Post Road?
No, I think that's, what's Post, oh, that's from the Cumberland Farms. It's now Tass Propane, it's Ballad Diesel Repair or something like that that's in there.
Ah.
I think that's it.
Yeah, this is where we.
I don't think we ever.
Well, we just tell us now.
Yeah.
Just courtesy.
Ware has done that too. Ware sent us a few things.
Yeah, well, my, my, my question is not towards, no, my question is towards the planning board, if we should have been, should have been doing this or is not a requirement.
Oh, I think it's just a courtesy, you know, that's all.
It's nice, but it really doesn't affect us in any way, and there's nothing we can say.
Right, yeah.
With their project.
But thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for letting us know.
I suppose if it's on the border, maybe that would be a good time to do it, but if it's in the middle of it, not a town.
But this is that they, they already approved it. No, it's too late.
Oh.
You know, I would consider a nice gesture if it's before, or if it's.
They might have approved it, but there may be an appeal period, you know, like a twenty-one day appeal period. So as in a butter, I think you would have a right to appeal it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we're not even close to that.
I mean, within maybe, you know, three hundred feet or five hundred feet, and I don't know where the location is, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Being said that, our meeting's in four weeks? Next meeting in four weeks?
I guess so. We're skipping.
Columbus Day.
Holiday.
One, two, three, four.
The eleventh, the eleventh is the, it's Columbus Day. That would actually be our next meeting.
No, the ninth.
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 I mean, we don't have anything really going on right now anyway, so.
And it would give the time for the new secretary to learn.
Yeah.
A little bit before we have a meeting, so.
Yeah.
Well, I would imagine that, you know, I, I, I know that when we had an interview today, Kim was in, you know, indicating that she'd at least have to give minimum of a two-week notice to, you know, to her current employer. So with that, coupled with, you know, the onboarding process, you know, you, you, you know, maybe by then you, you would have this person just about ready to start by your next meeting.
Okay. Okay. October twenty-third.
Sounds good.
Do you have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longigan, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
We're done. Thank you.